Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to call up Major James Limenselli, retired Major, served in the United States Army and the Persian Gulf, and Peter Pahola Senior, a Vietnam Veteran, who served the United States Air Force under the rank of Airman Second Class. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. Step right up to the microphone. The floor is yours.
All right. Pete, Ted, hut! Everybody face the flag of our nation. Present horems! I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you for service. Please, would everyone please remain standing? Like a moment of silence for Heather Hayer, who died this past Saturday, and also Virginia State Troopers, Trooper J. Cullen and Burke Bates. Please keep them your thoughts and prayers and their families and friends at this point. It's a very horrible situation which occurred. Just a moment of silence. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, August 16, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting to order 7:00 PM at Blakely Borough Building. I'd like to make a motion for the reading of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Chief Wallace?
At this time, I'd like to announce who was an executive session held by the Board of Commissioners at 6:45 this evening. Present were the Chairman, Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Cummings, the three solicitors, Solicitor Brazil, Solicitor Frederiksen, Solicitor Sarah, and myself. Commissioner O'Terriani was not in attendance. We had an executive session regarding personnel this evening, and Justin McGregor, our HR Director.
Ladies and gentlemen, immediately to follow, there will be a Board of Elections meeting, and I would just like to thank the Mayor, Council, Business Manager for bringing us to Blakely. It's their 150th anniversary, and we have our four on-the-road meetings, and we're going to be also having our annual budget meetings, but just like to thank them for welcoming us to Blakely and letting us use their council chambers. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the citizens that are here today. At this time, I'd like to do the proclamation presentation. Proclamation presentation declaring that August 16, 2017, as Borough of Blakely Day in Lackawanna County, celebrating the 150th anniversary. I was wondering if we could have the Mayor, some councilmen, maybe the Borough Manager, step up to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I'm looking around, and there's certainly a lot of familiar faces here. We want to welcome all of you who took the time to come here this evening, not only for your meeting, but to celebrate with us, as we are so very happy and honored to be serving at this very historical time, the time of our 150th sesquicentennial anniversary. So, we thank you for that and for the beverages that you brought for us this evening to celebrate with us. Other than that, we welcome you and hope that we can, during the course of the year, we work together with many of your heads of departments, and we cannot thank you enough for the cooperation and the way that we are able to enhance our boroughs because of your assistance. So, we're hoping that we want to thank you, and we're hoping that we can continue that rapport with the county so that each of the municipalities throughout the county can be successful and bring more people in to live. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Marianni. Please, would anyone like to stay standing? We'd like to just thank all of you for what you do. Being elected official is not an easy job. All three of us realize that. But, thank you for what you do with the Borough of Blakely and your citizens. You make sure that, and your neighborhood watch, second to none, and you do a lot of great things to make sure the community's safe. You've got a great police department, great volunteer fire companies, and great citizens. We have a proclamation. Whereas August 27, 1867, Blakely was incorporated as the Borough. Today, we recognize and celebrate the 150th anniversary, subsequent to the of Blakely Borough. Whereas the Borough was named after Captain Johnston Blakely, one of the most successful Army-Navy officers of the time, was Commander of the WASP, an American Schlup during the War of 1812. The Johnston Blakely Memorial, and Blakely is a large anchor of the aircraft carrier USS WASP. Whereas Blakely Borough was one of the first subdivisions carved out of the Blakely Township, a large land area once encompassed Lackawanna Valley north of Scranton, including Carbondale. As early as 1795, settlers cleared timber and farmed land in Lackawanna River Valley. When coal was king, thousands of tons of the nation's finest anthracite was mined in this borough. In later years, there many of the residents worked in local silk mills, dress factories. Blakely was the home of the grist and feed mill, ice cream manufacturing harnesses, blacksmith clothing shops, tailors, and two movie theaters. Whereas the 150th anniversary of Blakely Borough is an opportunity to acknowledge the founders and those who continued to govern it. Now, therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorraine E. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim August 16, 2017, on behalf of the 214,000 citizens, as Blakely Borough Day in Lackawanna County. We'd like to have the Council Mayor and the Attorney. Would you like to come right?
Back here.
What's up, boss? How are you?
Good.
Fran, tell us where we're at. Leaving a little bit. Do we want to get a couple of people from some of the council get over there, say? There's some people over there. Yeah.
It's your word.
All right, everybody looking at me. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All smiles looking at me. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thanks.
Congratulations. And I, thank you. Also, thank you for everything I do. And last but not least, for our Mayor, Jeanette Marianni. Congrats. I figured that you, a small token of my appreciation for what the mayor's doing. Jeanette's a fabulous lady. I know her for many years, and she does a great job here. I want to make sure that she got flowers for tonight.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you soon. Okay. Okay, 17-0218 Certificate Recognizing the Borough of Blakely for the Recycling Efforts. At this time, I'd like to have Barb Givenoli, Recycling Coordinator/Manager, Office of Environmental Sustainability, to come up and say a few words. Barb, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioner, and all of the members of the boards, the community, and the council, Mayor. Beautiful flowers. I'm here to express my deep gratitude, actually, and the opportunity to have been working with the Borough of Blakely for so many years in the environmental field. And I must say to everyone here that there is no municipality that exceeds in the efforts that Blakely does for its residents. I could say that firsthand. They're always ready to go that extra mile to serve their residents. To me, that's a very big deal. And I thank you for the opportunity to say those words, Commissioner. They're heartfelt.
Thanks. I was wondering if our Borough Manager could come up, Tom Mascura, because I know he's a huge part of this certificate. Tom, talk about the Blakely Borough and going green and taking care of the environment.
Well, the Borough would just like to compliment the Commissioners on having this recycling program that you had. It really helped us out a lot, because we were overwhelmed with TVs and electronics, and we didn't know where to go. And Barbara, we kept calling Barbara, and she was telling us, "Well, we're going to try to work it out, try to work it out," and finally, you know, you came through with it, and we really appreciated it.
No, we appreciate everything that you do every day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, thank you so much for all that you do, do. And I was just out at C cap. I had the opportunity to talk about some resolutions with our County Commissioner Association of Pennsylvania, and I'll have you know that they are putting a resolution together. And I'll read it to you. The Association supports temporary lifting the disposal ban on electronic devices in the Covered Device Recycling Act of 2010 until a permanent fix to the act can be implemented. The Covered Device Recycling Act has provided insufficient funding to cover the cost of electronics recycling, with the result that the number of collection sites across the state has dramatically declined. In the absence of convenient collection sites, there has been an increase in illegal dumping of these devices, which we've seen throughout the county. And temporarily lifting the landfill ban will provide some place for electronics to be collected until the CDRA can be adequately amended to provide appropriate funding. It's just a resolution for right now, and we will be voting on it within the coming weeks. But, just so you know, that this is not just a Lackawanna County issue. This is a problem. And we are thinking about it throughout the state, and hopefully, we'll be able to come to a solution to the problem. And I wanted to make sure that because of your efforts, you've helped to alleviate some of the pain to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
But, I'd also like to go a little further. You know, our 40 municipalities, it really is not the county's government's responsibility for the TVs.
Nope.
But, we wanted to make sure, and with Barb's, Givenoli's position, she's always been for go green and making sure the community's clean. And we knew that if we weren't going to do something, that they were going to be strewn alongside the roadways.
Yes.
So, we did have an opportunity for two weeks to help the citizens of Lackawanna County. And I'd like to thank all 40 municipalities who got involved and really did a great job, especially your borough.
It was a great help, believe me.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I too want to thank you for your work and your service. Last year, we were able to extend that program for a month. This year, the negotiations seemed to have fallen short, so it was only a two-week period. I think we should work a little bit more diligently with the local recycler to make sure that they're a little bit more receptive to the needs of our community. And I think that's something we should be a little bit more diligent on, on our part, as opposed to yours. It would make it a little bit easier on the boroughs and the townships to do it. I think, you know, in reality, we should have to, we'd be able to work a little harder at that. And again, as I said, it's not the county's responsibility, but since we are the host county for a landfill, we should, and because we do have an issue with the, or a relationship with the recycling center, we should be a little bit more forceful in our work with them to ensure that they're more receptive to the needs of the citizens of Lackawanna County. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But, I'd like to thank the municipalities for a job well done. And beyond the fact, our attorneys, our Chief of Staff, worked very hard, and two weeks was exactly what we were able to get. If we could have gotten four weeks, we would have had four weeks. So, we picked that two-week window to try to get everyone's TV recycled or any of their computer modules, because it really, really mattered to the citizens of our community. Okay, we have a Certificate of Recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Blakely Borough for being a consistent, leading municipality in recycling since 1990 and providing a stellar service to all its residents, given Wednesday, August 16, 2017, by the Board of Commissioners, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorraine E. Cummings. Would you like to come forward?
Whoa, wait. Something fell.
Nice solicitor now.
Ladies and gentlemen, when we do these on-the-road meetings, what we do is, we bring just about all of our directors in, if they're able to make it. So, I'd ask all of our directors, any seats that we have, please come in and sit down, because if any questions are asked, they're here to actually answer them right on the spot. So, we usually have, so there's lots of seats in the front and the middle, so please come and sit down. Thank you for being here tonight. Our directors, our deputy directors do great work in Lackawanna County. Okay, 17-0219 Small Businesses, English Appliance. Commissioner Cummings?
So, today, we have English Appliance as a small business spotlight, and who do we have here in recognition of?
Would the English family like to come up to the microphone?
Oh, the whole family, good. Can I show you my phone?
You're the best. Ladies and gentlemen, when we do these on-the-road meetings, what we do is, we bring just about all of our directors in, if they're able to make it. So, I'd ask all of our directors, any seats that we have, please come in and sit down, because if any questions are asked, they're here to actually answer them right on the spot. So, we usually have, so there's lots of seats in the front and the middle, so please come and sit down. Thank you for being here tonight. Our directors, our deputy directors do great work in Lackawanna County. Okay, 17-0219 Small Businesses, English Appliance. Commissioner Cummings?
So, today, we have English Appliance as a small business spotlight, and who do we have here in recognition of?
Would the English family like to come up to the microphone?
Oh, the whole family, good. Can I show you my phone?
You're the best.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, thank you for having us.
What do you have? Your names?
Kevin English.
And, is this your wife?
Carol English.
Gail English.
Thank you so much for coming in. Tell us a little bit about your business, and what started, where did it start? How did it stay?
My great-grandfather started the business.
Amazing.
And then, my father, my mom, my mom here, and I taken it over. My wife runs most of it now. She does most of the day-to-day activities.
And what do yous do there?
We have hardware, housewares. I service appliances.
A little bit of everything.
Little bit of everything. We're small loads, or Home Depot, maybe.
I saw that, I saw that on the description.
Many.
And how many years? This is 19, open in 1932.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That is awesome. I mean, I'm so thrilled to have you here. I'm so proud that you're here to show your local community and those that are watching on ECTV.
And we'd like to thank our communities that support us and our customer base. We would like to thank those people for making us.
Well, you're an inspiration to the community because of the years of service you've put into your small business. And it's people like you that continue to make our economy work and give inspiration to those that want to start their own businesses as well. And that's part of the reason that we started this, and I'm thrilled to have you here. It's just a great story, and it's just amazing that you've brought it from generation to generation. So proud to have you here. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Congratulations on all the great work.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
As I'm sure you're more than well aware, small business is very difficult these days.
Yes.
Government insurance taxes make it that much more difficult. The world has changed considerably, but if you have a niche and you can persevere and you're willing to work hard, I know that's what, you know, I do in my small business. And I'm only there since the 70s, so if you'd be there since the 30s, it's quite an accomplishment. And congratulations, and I give you a lot of credit. Thank you.
It's a great hardware store. They care about the community, big smile when you walk in. Gail's one of the first people you meet at the door. I was involved in a large construction project appear approximately eight years ago, and I was in there sometimes daily, sometimes weekly, sometimes two times in a day. Always there to help, order something if they didn't have it, or try to make it better for you. I mean it. And it really matters. And I think that one of the reasons why their hardware store, with all these big chains around, make it, because of the fact that the people, the community, understands that these are a family that care about everybody that lives here. And there's people from outside the area that I know that come to here, because there's things that you might have that our big chains may not have. But, I think the fact of the smiles and the conversations, and that you care about the community, is the reason why people keep coming back. And I hope you have another great 50 years behind you. It really matters for all of us. Your dad, I used to talk to him, and God rest his soul, I know that he would love to have been here tonight.
Yes.
He was a great man, and I know the community still misses him. I know it's a few years later.
Thank you.
But, he really mattered. And your mom is there all the time. See, she mom when you go into the store, so. But, this is long overdue, and we're just happy to be here. And Commissioner Cummings is going to present you with a certificate for your business.
I'm honored to present the Certificate of Recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize English as Appliance in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given the 16th day of August, 2017, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up.
Why don't we do it right? We'll come right down there for you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
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 Thank you.
But, that's what it's about, you know, Main Street businesses and families being involved, and there's days that aren't easy. I'm involved with a family business. But, at the end of the day, with all the hard work, it really matters. You own your own business, and you care about the people that you work with every day that come in. At this time, I'd like to, for the opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only, you need your name and address.
Wayne Evans, 426 Mulberry Streets, Grandpa. Good evening, Commissioners and everybody else. Got quite a group up there tonight. My name is Wayne Evans, of course. I am a councilman for the City of Scranton. I'm here tonight to discuss your plans to put a vote on the ballot questioning and concerning reassessment. We all know, all of us should know, I am a proponent of reassessment, something I've been interested in since 2007 as the Director of the Assessment Office, prior to the abandonment of that initiative. So, I'll keep my comments focused on the matter at hand. If I may, the ballot question reads, shall the Lack, in part, shall Lackawanna County Commissioners incur debt not to exceed $12 million? First of all, putting an actual dollar amount on the ballot when no one actually has a clear idea of what the costs actually are, in my opinion, can be somewhat misleading. Your own study estimated the cost of reassessment between $5 million and $13 million. Your General Counsel stated in today's paper, we have quotes for as high as $15 million and other quotes as low as $8 million. Although, I must have missed the RFQ where the quotes were gathered, because I haven't seen any quotes on reassessment cost. With that said, I'm here tonight to offer a third opinion on the cost, my own. After consulting with several industry leaders in the field of reassessment, and knowing that all of the field work for the entire county has already been completed and would only need to be updated, not totally and completely redone, it's my opinion that a reassessment would most likely cost between $5 and $7 million, as I feel qualified to make that statement as anyone to date has made their cost analysis. So, my point is, we really don't know, and therefore, we should not have, not have a ballot question that pretends to do so. But, I think we can all agree, and I know Commissioner Cummings agrees with this as well, that it is vitally important that the public be fully informed as to the impact of a reassessment on individual property owners, as well as the impact on school districts and municipalities throughout Lackawanna County. I would propose that you table this issue until such a time that a comprehensive study on reassessment be completed by an independent third party. While I have all the respect for Mr. Wallace's talents as Chief of Staff, and he's clearly an asset to Lackawanna County, he's simply not an expert on reassessment, and he's clearly not an independent third party. Mr. Wallace's study has approximately four to five pages of real content. This is a study, right here, 30 pages, that was developed by Weiss-Burkhart Kramer LLC from Pittsburgh. This 30-page study was completed for Blair County, a county, by the way, that has just 4,871 individual properties. According to your study, Lackawanna County has 101,000 properties. So, to move forward with this ballot question without such an in-depth study would be unfair to the taxpayers that you and I represent. Secondly, and finally, there's a homestead question on the ballot as well. I think the competing nature of having two questions on the ballot is confusing to the public, and at the very least, I would ask you to postpone this vote to the spring election primary. So, that's all I have for now. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak on this very important issue.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Can I ask one of our, either our Chief of Staff or one of our lawyers? The RFQ, why couldn't we do an RFQ?
We did respond to a request from the City Council. In order for us to do an RFQ, there are only two firms in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that are licensed that could conduct a reassessment, and it would have been unfair to ask them with the amount of time they'd have to put into it to give us an actual quote. We got estimates through the County Commissioners Association and working with other counties in Pennsylvania that had reassessments done, and the data that was collected on our past reassessment would all have to be totally updated and could not be utilized. We do not have that in a working format. The reason it was abandoned last time, it was noted there were almost 10,000 errors in it, so we don't know where all the errors exist, and all probability, we're going to have to start at square one.
Also, I have another question. Did Council reach out to us probably in April, May, looking for that documentation?
They did, and we responded that they could come in and review all of our information, and we received another request from the City Business Administrator approximately four weeks ago, and we again told them they could come in and view all of the data we had, and both John Foley and myself met with them about two weeks ago. I believe Councilman Evans was in attendance, as well as some of the city officials, and we shared all of that information with them.
Okay. Anyone else still would like to speak? How are you?
Good evening. Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania. First off, 17-0208, I looked at the backup, but I did not see a timeline for that project. I trust that Mr. Kelly will be providing that. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Yes, when he comes up.
Okay. The next, 17-0209, would you please tell me what's wrong with the courthouse sidewalk that we need to spend $1 million on them?
It's a mess, and when it was put in, it was, I think it wasn't put in properly, and it's disintegrating. And we're hoping that we can, we'll be able to get a grant for that, George, at this point.
Seven, well, according to your backup, which apparently is only 700, so we're, we taxpayers will still be on the hook for a quarter of a million dollars, so I'm not sure that it's that necessary.
We're going to try to, we're going to try to make sure that it's done as cheaply as possible, and try to live within the grant if possible, if we can.
Thank you. 0214, I guess it's, since it's before 15, it doesn't make much sense to me, but I am sadly to say... sadly to say against that because I really, after reading the backup to 17-0215, I really don't trust you all to not skew this to a no vote after reading that proposed ballot question. And I don't, I don't know how you get it right. Also, I would assume that it would be based on, on doing it the old-fashioned way, which is send all the people out, take pictures, do all that stuff. It is the 21st century, you know, I bet almost everybody in here has a cellphone, digital. I would maintain that the same effort can be done, even probably taking the pictures with Google Earth. But aside from the pictures, we have government databases within the county, and we have other government databases or quasi-databases that give us all kinds of enriched information, which is the United States Post Office. They can tell you down to every, every delivery person's little square or whatever shape it is, and they could tell you how much people earn in that, what their value, I mean, I maintain that we need, and I'm really upset that knowing what's on the agenda tonight, that Senator Blake's not here, or any representatives, because this is important. It's important to the whole state, and I think that it needs to be solved, not solved, but the new, going into the 21st century from the current system, needs probably some legislative paperwork to sprinkle holy water on this. So I, I think we need to meet with them, and I think we need to find a better way to do it. But anyway, so I definitely against that dog and pony show. And then, 2015, again, as you're well aware, I am strongly in favor of, I was going to bring one from one of the sections, so it's ironic that it's a Wednesday and the Times-Tribune has the, the real estate section, and I don't know if anybody saw that lovely property up in, actually, it was Glenburn, I think it said Dalton, but it was Glenburn when I tracked it down on the computer, that was for sale for something like $800,000. Now, I know, you put your house on the market, you've raised it a little bit, but it was, it was assessed at something like $15,000 or $20,000. We need it. We need it desperately. So I would like, if you're, if you're going to stick with, with putting this on the ballot, which you know I don't agree with, I say it should be simplified to simply state, shall the county perform a countywide property assessment to reflect the current market value?
Regarding the, regarding the question on assessment, the wording is misleading. In fact, to borrow up to $12 million.
Well, it's begging, a no vote, number one, and it's inaccurate.
Yeah, begging for a no vote. Again, you know, the values, the appraisals that came in were between $5 and $13 million, and we do have information from the last time it was done. It is relatively, you know, it certainly dated a little bit, but there's some certain, there are some things, but unless we talk to a company that can come in and give us an idea of how that data can be used, we won't have any idea of how much it's actually going to cost. And then, to put the question on and ask for the predetermined rate, predetermined ratio of 100% is also a question or a statement that's misleading. How many people in this room know, actually know what that means? Do you have any idea what that means? Yeah, you do, Wayne. There's not a lot. So you're confusing people immediately. You're encouraging people to vote no without educating them, and that's what this question does.
Absolutely.
This question absolutely misleads and misinforms people so that they are encouraged to vote no because they don't understand this. And you can't blame them. If they, if people don't like change, if they don't understand what it is. The change, on the other hand, from the state question, is something that helps them. That encourages the state to give them more money, okay? It raises it from 50% to 100% of how much money they can give back to the school districts for their primary residents. It's not for all real estate, it's not for commercial real estate, but it's monies from the casinos that the state can give, that's the homestead, so where you live, you can receive more money if you pass that. So for these two questions to be on the ballot at the same time is totally wrong. And you can't educate people in this short a period of time. It's in the people's best interest to pass the state one. It's in the people's best interest to educate them so that they can make a wise decision if, in fact, we don't have, if we can't just do it because it's the right thing to do after 50 years, that we educate them and six, four weeks or four, two months or three months isn't enough time. If we put that ballot, that question on the ballot in May and not confuse them with the two questions at the same time, just makes a whole bunch more sense. Thank you, Marie.
And personally, I, you know, I really, again, I think there's an easier way, and I don't understand how, how we could not have had something on the ballot for the purchase of the Globe Store if we can have it for this. Thank you.
Could I have our Chief Financial Officer, Commissioner Dirk, come up and say a few words? I don't want to get into this part, but we will. Approximately how much was reassessment costing back in 2005 when we started it?
We ended up spending about $8.5 million from the initial expenditure that happened sometime in 2003 until I think we finally made the, the last expenditure in 2009, I believe.
And, so, you know, we're talking about eight years ago. Now, how much more would have it been to finish it if we had have finished? Was there a number set, or was there?
I, I don't know that, that we have a certified number for that, Commissioner, but we did have an estimate at the time that it would cost approximately $3 million to have the same company complete what they started, and then we had to delay because of the 10,000 errors that Mr. Wallace mentioned before. And it took about three years to rectify what all those differences were, the 10,000 errors, after which the company that had done the work said that they weren't able to certify because it was too far away from the time that they had done the work, and they estimated it would cost about another $3 million to, for them to, to complete the reassessment and do it all over again, essentially, I mean, update everything. In addition, there were estimates at the time by the then-current Commissioners that it might cost as much as $5 million to go through the appeals process. I don't know what that was based on, except that Commissioner O'Brien at the time said that Luzerne County, which had just completed their reassessment within a year or so of 2009, it cost them a lot of money, and again, he estimated about $5 million. So at the time, Commissioner O'Brien said that in, in his estimation, it would have cost another $8 million to complete the reassessment that had begun back in 2003, actually.
That's in addition to the five, wasn't it?
Excuse me?
That was in addition to the five, or is that in total?
It was costing like $13 million. In total, it would have been approximately $3 million to pay the company to update everything because it was out of date by three years by then, and then Commissioner O'Brien estimated another $5 million for appeals.
So, so five, three, and five? Yes? Are you talking about five and three?
No, no. We, we spent about $8 million, $8.5 million, and then, after three years of research to figure out what the 10,000 errors were, we got those pretty much down to nothing. There may have been a couple errors still, but, but that was three years later. And the company who did the reassessment said that it was too far from the date that they had completed their work to certify those results, so it would cost us $3 million more to pay them to update their results so that they could certify it. And then again, Commissioner O'Brien estimated about $5 million in court costs to cover all of the, the appeals. So it costs about $8.5 million, and at the time, Commissioner O'Brien estimated it would be about another $8 million if we were to complete it at that time.
So the cost to the county was actually, we spent eight, eight point something, million dollars?
That's correct, about 8.4, actually, Commissioner.
8.4. Nothing. It's just gone. 8.4 million dollars just gone. All worthless information. Okay. I need a legal opinion on if we, if this is voted, is this binding? Because it seems to me that a past administration stopped it. Can I have a legal opinion by one of our attorneys?
Yeah. Commissioner, is what I would answer to that is when you first approached the vote, looking into this situation, you had asked that there be a binding resolution to bind former boards of commissioners so they wouldn't be able to proceed and stop an assessment once it was restarted. And the language for the question that we came up with, I would like to take credit for creating it completely, it actually comes from the Local Government Unit Debt Act, Section 804, 804.2, subsection B. And is what this is, is this is an act that allows the county, for certain purposes, to incur what's called electoral debt as opposed to non-electoral debt. If the Board of Commissioners had just voted to approve and proceed with this, that would be considered non-electoral debt, and it would go against our cap. Tom can tell you what the cap is, I'm not sure the exact number, but the electoral debt, because it's put before the voters, it does not count towards our cap, and we would be able to continue to have that, that cap freed up for future borrowing in the future if something was to come up that county needed to borrow. But anyway, the money would be borrowed only for the purpose of committing the reassessment, and it wouldn't be able to be used for any other purpose except the reassessment. So any future Board of Commissioners was to come in and wanted to try to stop it, they would, you know, they were just going to have that debt there, so it would be unlikely that they would do so.
Commissioner O'Malley, the concern, the concern that was expressed was, was the $12 million enough?
Ah, yeah, I don't think it is.
Because there's also costs of implementing it and costs of the appeal. It would not make sense to go, to go through a bond issue twice. That's too costly.
The $12 million would not include the cost of appeals because that's considered as cost of doing government. This was only to cover the cost of the actual assessment, reassessment itself.
And discussing it, that was, that wasn't high enough.
That was my concern.
That was a concern expressed by Commissioner Cummings, and I think she, she can speak for herself, but I think she actually would have favored a higher amount to make sure there's enough.
Correct. Yeah. We felt that the, that's why it says up to $12 million, because we would have to get the, we'd have to do an RFQ and get into the proposals and take it from there. We don't know exactly how much it is. We have estimates, Mr. Wallace had, again, estimates, anywhere between $8 million up to $13 million, and we felt that up to $12 million would cover the cost of the reassessment itself.
Well, we didn't include me, just so everyone knows.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak?
John Appleton, 225 Granview Street, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania. Leadership requires decision-making, whether it's good or whether it's bad, and sometimes there's unintended consequences to the decisions you make. And tonight, you're going to make a decision that may have unintended consequences down the line as far as how the county ends up in a, in a tax-positive fashion. There's three primary reasons why dollars and cents as to what the cost of the reassessment is, isn't relevant. The first is, we had a tutorial, my old mind sometimes misses timeframes, but Conrad Bosley gave us a tutorial about how this reassessment would affect the taxpayers of this county, and he broke it down. One-third of the people would be affected by it in a positive fashion, that would be the people on the lower end of our socioeconomic scale, the middle-third of the people would have no difference at all, and people who could afford to pay a higher tax would be in the upper-third, who would end up being the ones who would be affected by the tax reassessment. To have a tax reassessment at this point helps you from an economic growth standpoint because with our tax assessment as it stands now, it's very difficult to attract new businesses into here. If you have a finite policy, that will go a long way towards helping you to attract those businesses to come in here. And lastly, the City of Scranton is in dire financial situation, and the school board in particular has a serious issue as to whether or not taxes have to be increased. Now, as an aside tutorial, for every real estate tax dollar you have, 70% of that is attributable to the school district. The other 30% is broken down between the city and the county. So when you raise a tax, or the city raises a tax, it doesn't burden the taxpayers as much as what a school district does. And if what I read in the paper is correct, with the financial condition in the school district and necessity to raise taxes, it's going to be devastating on the people in the City of Scranton who probably need tax relief more than anybody. Commissioner Cummings has indicated on previous occasion that she has grave concern about this tax situation of our people in this county. You have an opportunity tonight to vote no, and I'm asking you to vote no on the resolution. And then, circling back to where I started, make the decision you were elected to do and institute a reassessment program in a fiscally responsible way in order to help those people in this county that need it the most. Thank you very much.
Mr. Appleton, before you leave the podium, could you answer me where the one-third rule comes from? Because that is not, not proven anywhere.
I can tell you that, and I think you were there when Conrad Bosley spoke about, I'm going to say eight months ago, nine months ago, and in his tutorial that he gave us as far as tax reassessment is concerned, that was his position concerning how the tax reassessment would affect the entirety of our population. One-third would be unaffected, one-third would be affected in a positive way, and one-third would be affected in a way that would cause an increase in tax.
But there's no proof, that was just his opinion, because we've researched that.
There's no proof it's going to cost you $12 million either. At some point, you go on faith, and you make a decision.
Correct. I agree with that, but I'll be of no doubt.
And that's what you were elected to do, and not to abrogate it to the, to the, to the voters. You were elected to make decisions for the best interest of our county, and the best interest of our county, from a development standpoint, from a tax standpoint, and from a, the City of Scranton standpoint, is to give them a break.
But this is about the county, not just the City of Scranton. And, you know, there are other municipalities in Lackawanna County, so I'm concerned about all the residents, not just Scranton.
Me too. And that's why if you listen to Conrad, and you believe what Conrad said, there's two-thirds of them are going to get a positive effect here.
Conrad's wrong. There's no proof for his statement, I'm sorry to say.
We can, we can debate it till the cows come home, but what I'm asking you to do is vote no, and then go forward in a positive way, in a fiscally responsible way, which I know you would do, in order to ensure that reassessment happens.
Thank you, Mr. Appleton.
Good evening. I'm Paula Nenish, 17 Winthrop Street in Jessup.
Thanks for coming in, Paula.
Thanks for having the evening meetings. I try to attend them where I can. I do have two questions. First, regarding the ratification of a quote from SWEATA Advertising on the reassessment video. I'd like to ask you to table that. I read in the paper today that there was only one quote obtained, and that quote could be between $18,000 and $20,000, something, something to that effect. And it indicated in the paper that this was stated because you did business with this vendor in the past, and you had a good result. I'm a business professional, and it's important to have good quality results and work with vendors, have a good relationship. But the other part is, it's important to be cost-effective when you're using our tax dollars. So perhaps if you had other quotes from different agencies, you may be able to save the taxpayers additional funds. So I'm asking if you could table that item for this evening.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I apologize.
Paula Nenish.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks for coming in, Paula.
Now, I have one more.
Okay, keep going.
On to the reassessment. The question I have, and I don't know if this came up in the past, was if this referendum is placed on a ballot that every voting member in Lackawanna County can place a vote and select yes or no whether they want it or don't, there's actually a good part of the voting population that do not own real estate and do not pay property taxes. How can someone vote who doesn't have a direct interest in the result? And I don't know if the Commissioners can answer that, or the attorneys, and I know that there's only certain items that could be on a referendum on a ballot, and I'm, I would really like to just get an answer to that question.
Okay, if you're done, that's, we'll answer at the end.
So I'd like you, I'd like you to be able to answer that before you place, place a referendum vote. And I also agree with listing the dollar amount. If the dollar amount really isn't a true dollar amount, and you, you didn't have requests or proposals to determine what the actual amount would be, I think it would be unfair to place that number on the ballot as well, unless you had valid information from a company that can actually stand behind that amount. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seventeen dash zero two one six.
Approving current payables. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. From the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 247747 through 248679 inclusive, totaling two million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling five million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Does the Board have any questions? Controller DeBilio, everything good on our current payables?
Yes, Commissioners, all invoices on today's agendas have been audited, approved, and paid. And if there's anything in particular that you'd like to discuss, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you, Controller DeBilio. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero two zero five.
Entering into a Homeland Security Grant Agreement. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a grant agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Emergency Management, the Northeast Regional County Terrorism Task Force for the U.S. Homeland Security Grant, in the amount of one million, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, to commence September 1st, 2017, and expire on August 31st, 2020. And Deputy Director of Emergency Management, Rich Barbola, is here to explain the agreement.
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Maureen. Good evening, everyone. This is the annual grant, which we participate in every year. We're part of the Northeast Regional Counterterrorism Task Force, which is an eight-county group, which that money is divided amongst. Through the years, we've been fortunate enough to gain quite a bit of equipment, services, training, et cetera. Recently, we redid our entire audiovisual system in our emergency operations center. Currently, we have a truck being built, emergency management hazmat response vehicle, and quite a few other things. They're replacing, currently, they're going to be replacing bomb suits for all the bomb technicians within the eight-county region, and they're quite expensive. It goes towards maintenance, agreements on software, and certain equipment that we have also. So that's pretty much the gist of that agreement there. It's an annual agreement that we participate in every year.
Safety for emergency services and our citizens.
Absolutely.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Barbola? Make a motion entering a Homeland Security Grant, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Rich.
Commissioner, one other thing, real quick. I left some information for our Code Red product out on the table in the vestibule for the people to pick up. It's an emergency notification program that we've had.
Talk about it, talk about it.
You can register for this program, and it's free, there's no cost to you whatsoever. You can also get an app for your phone. You would get emergency notifications in the event of something where maybe you had to evacuate, there was, you know, a dangerous criminal loose, a missing person, or something of that nature. So it's a good program. Again, it's free, it'll take not more than ten minutes of your time to register for it. All the instructions are on the brochure I left in the lobby for you. Sign onto the county website, click on the icon that's there, and it will take you right to the registration page for it. The app on the phone, the only thing I would tell you, you get weather alerts from the National Weather Service. There's a one-time fee in at ninety-nine cents. But any other kind of alert on your phone is free. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be here for the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Seventeen dash zero two zero six.
Yes. A grant for arts and culture funding request. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby grant the following request from the Department of Arts and Culture for the Disability Action Committee Disability Fair on October 28th, to be held at the Viewmont Mall, in the amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners and public. We're really excited about this project. I believe Chris Arnon is here, would you come up and talk a little bit about it? Thank you. We're really happy. Keith Williams unfortunately couldn't be here, but this is a great, we haven't done anything like this in the county, to support persons with disabilities and educate the public. So I'm really thrilled they approached us. It's definitely a big initiative of the county, so I'd like you to talk a little bit about the...
Commissioner, and the entire county, actually, thank you so very much for what you're doing for our disabled community. People aren't aware, as they, they're going to become aware. We've been lucky enough to have the Commissioners form this all-volunteer group that we're offering to the community. We're doing little things such as making sure electric doors open, all the way up to looking at and giving our input into the new Globe Store project. And we're very happy that the county has helped us so much and to help us with this event coming up for awareness, we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, all of us grew up in the seventies and eighties and stuff, and there was no curb cuts, there was no buses, there was no doorways, they were accessible. You know, this is about making the playing field even for everybody. And this Disabilities Action Committee actually was formulated a while ago, but nothing had been done for five years. So in 2016, when the new board came in, we wanted to bring in people that would really be involved in the committee and do a lot of great work, Keith Williams, Attorney Chris Arnon, and numerous others that are on the boards, and some of them, they're just at the meetings. And it really matters. And I think it's great that the fair is going to be coming up. And I think it's good for the people to understand that, you know, there's people out there that may have an issue getting through a doorway, or like you said, I mean, we try to be at the forefront. We have our boundless playgrounds. I mean, they're for any child to play. The last thing you want to be is a child in a wheelchair, sitting and not being able to get into, get on a swing. We have that option. We take care of our citizens, and I'm just happy that the committee's going great. It's basically a year and a half later, and the committee's moving forward with this event. I think it's going to be great.
I was just going to applaud the Commissioners because this, you know, is a five thousand dollar well-spent, I think. We're hoping this will be seed money, so it'll grow and it'll get bigger and we can hopefully see some work of...
In any event.
Yeah, so, we want to congratulate you guys for being so forward-thinking and...
Does the Board, would the Board like to say anything? Commissioner Cummings?
I think it's great. I think, you know, we've seen a lot of different initiatives that we've implemented that are really looking towards assisting our residents regardless, and, you know, that's what we're here to do. And I think these initiatives, just like the small business spotlight with all of us being business owners, and more and more areas where we're going to help in the opioid crisis, this is just yet another addition to how the three of us are working to make things a little bit different and a little bit better for everyone that lives here in Lackawanna County. So thank you for being a part of it, and thank you for coming in and discussing it. And thank you, Maureen, for your help on it as well.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's all about making the quality of life in Lackawanna County better. And thank you both for everything you do. Making quality of life here better is something that attracts economic development. People want to come here and they want to live here. The only way that we can go forward and lower taxes is by bringing more people here so that we have a bigger tax base. And it's things like this that don't appear to make a difference that actually do. Companies and businesses look at this kind of thing. They look at the Everheart, they look at what we do with these communities, with the disabled and with the arts and culture. And it makes it very, very important for them to say, you know what, that's really a nice place to go. We want to move our company there. We want to come there. It's a great place, and you guys, and thanks for everything. It's a lot of small pieces that come together to make it a better place. The recycling, all the different pieces, it's all part of a big puzzle. And thank you for your help. Thank you.
And Commissioner O'Terriani's right, it is about quality of life, and it is, Lackawanna County is a great community to live in. I'd like to just thank for everything you do. And quality of life is for everybody. We want to make sure that everybody has access to anything that we have in our community, especially Lackawanna County. So thank you for coming in. I'd like to make a motion for grants and arts, granting arts and culture funding request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Homeland, right?
Yeah, your stuff. And I'd like to applaud the committee because they really do a great job. They meet monthly, they get together, and they really, they work really hard. They go through our parks, like you said, they've gone through the Globe Store, and we'll leave, the Globe Store is there for them to walk into. So before we do start construction, we make sure that everybody can get around throughout the whole 250,000 square foot building, so, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Make sure you mark October 28th on your calendars for the Viewmont Mall to come up for the fair.
What's the time?
Yeah, what are the hours?
They're going to be a break though. We don't have, we have our work yet. I think eleven to five, I believe.
Oh, that's right. Plenty of time.
Let us know. It's going to be great. Everyone, please come out. Seventeen dash zero two zero seven.
This is the awarding of an arts and culture grant. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award an arts and culture grant to the following community organization. This is to Archibald Borough for five hundred dollars for their Harvest Festival. And Maureen McGuigan is here again to explain the...
This is part of our municipal grant program where municipalities can apply on what we call a rolling basis, that means anytime, there's no deadlines up until November, for five hundred dollars for a community event, kind of reflecting what Commissioner O'Terriani, Commissioner O'Malley were saying. So this will be on September 24th in Archibald, for music at their Harvest Festival.
Does the Board have any questions for Maureen? Okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding arts grant, arts and culture grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, Maureen. Seventeen dash zero two zero eight.
Authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. Whereas the County of Lackawanna, on behalf of the City of Scranton, the Borough of Clark Screen, Clark Summit, Dalton, and Dunmore, the Townships of Newton, South Abington, Waverly, and West Abington, will be undertaking a project to implement the multi-municipal comprehensive plan of the Scranton-Abington Planning Association as outlined and authorized by the Intergovernmental Cooperation Implementation Agreement. Whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development makes available grants and aid projects through the Municipal Assistance Program, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby authorizes submission of such application to the Municipal Assistance Program. Be further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby commits resources in the amount of thirty thousand dollars as match for the said project. And Mr. George Kelly, our Director of Economic and Community Development, is here to answer any questions you might have on these Commissioners.
Good evening, Commissioners. This SAPR application, it's been a project that's been going on for over ten years, and it's nine, actually, it started out with ten municipalities that came together that said, we want to coordinate our local zoning ordinances to protect our communities. And what that means, if you have Dunmore, Scranton, the Abingtons, all in together, and if you have a permitted use for a certain business, such as garbage dump, such as a power plant, a junkyard, as long as you're part of this organization, and as long as you should permit that use as part of that organization, you don't have to put one in your town. So it's a valuable tool for true planning in terms of city and rural communities. There is nine communities right now that's participating in this. They all just recently passed ordinances, resolutions, to be part of this because they see the benefit of this. The challenge is, it costs a lot of money to review all the different ordinances for each community that participates. So we're applying for the Assistance Program for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this grant. It's basically an open window to apply for these grants through a single lap with Harrisburg. We anticipate a funding round coming in September, October timeframe. So we want to have our application, and Nancy Marie's question is that we want the application in by September, so hopefully we can get Harrisburg to approve this grant, and then we could get started with this good work by the end of the year. Please note that there is a thirty thousand dollar match part of this that would be coming out of the planning budget of our county to obtain this one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in benefit of all nine municipalities.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
George. Did you say that again, they're going to be able to stop somebody? Did you say stop a business from coming into a municipality? Is that what you said just now?
What we have with municipalities now, if somebody wants to come into town, if they want to come to Blakely, if they want to put a power plant down here, Blakely is going to have to find someplace to put a power plant here. Now, they could put all restrictions on for size and everything else, but you have to allow all different legal concerns to be able to do business in your communities. Now, as part of the SAPR plan, the nine communities, they could say, well, as a region, as a group of municipalities, we have power plants, you know, up on the mountain over in Clark Summit where nobody lives. We have a garbage dump in Dunmore, so therefore we don't have to have, and we're not forced to let a dump open up in our town.
So what if they do want one and the other six dump?
Well, typically, each municipality has control over what they will allow. So we have to review all the different ordinances of the nine municipalities. They'll decide each municipality, we want to allow this or we don't want to allow this. We'll have a uniform ordinance among the different municipalities. It's not, the county's not going to in any way say you should do this or could do this. We just administer, because that's a headache in itself, and it's not what we do. But we would allow them to actually decide, and they make the choices over what comes and what doesn't.
Who's them? Is that the nine, or is that just the one municipality?
Each municipality decides what they will have in their town, in their municipality.
And the others can't stop them?
No, they can't.
Well, then what's the purpose of it?
To protect yourselves if you didn't want a certain use, such as you want transitional housing, you want single-room occupancies, seems to be a big concentration downtown Scranton. You may not want certain type of businesses in your area that if there's a heavy commercial area somewhere else within the nine, you're not forced or compelled to do that in your town.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
This is just a conduit for us to help to get grants through this program.
Well, we're actually doing a little more than just a pass-through of the money.
Right.
Is there's been a volunteer group for the last ten years that have made steady progress, but just couldn't get it off the ground and couldn't make it happen. So about a year ago, I asked the Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission, and my planning team to say, can we help this along, be the project managers of this, to kind of bring that benefit? So we're doing a little more than just passing, we're actually, we'll be managing and reviewing and helping, the same way we do now for all municipalities as part of regional planning.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing an application for the Pennsylvania Municipality Assistance Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Supposed to bring business on the level of the state, right?
I'm going to be here a while.
Seventeen dash zero two zero nine.
Ratifying and authorizing the following applications for the multimodal transportation program. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting revitalization within Lackawanna County, whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the multimodal transportation program for various projects as detailed. For the Stauffer Road paving project Phase One in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, with the grant request from Lackawanna County looking for five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. A proposed Courthouse Square sidewalk project, total estimated cost would be one million, eighty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents. A grant request from Lackawanna County, the amount of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents, except any awards related to these grants, therefore all documents except any awards related to these grants. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lockawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize and ratifies the submission of these set applications to the multimodal transportation program.
Mr. Kelly?
Uh, this is an application, we're just asking for the money, submitting the applications to the Department of Community and Economic Development. The two projects, one as we discussed, there's some questions prior to this being covered, was that the sidewalks are in very bad shape around the courthouse. We're applying for assistance to redo those, make it safe for residents, since there is some heavy traffic down on the square. There's no guarantee we're going to get this grant. Usually sidewalks score pretty low in this program, but we figured, Wednesday, it's like spaghetti, throw it against the wall, see what sticks. We figured we'd submit this in and see if we could get it approved by DCD. Projects such as the second one, the Stauffer Park, is definitely one that typically gets funded because it has heavy impact, economic development impacts. Stauffer Road, if you've been out on that road in Taylor, it's in pretty sad shape. It's a county responsibility to maintain it. So this is one, it's really our role to maintain those roads, and it's a very meaningful project, and we're submitting it, hopefully that we get these funded, one or the other.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
We would be responsible for how much of the, uh, the replacement of the sidewalks at the courthouse, what would the grant be, and how much would the county be responsible for?
The total grant that we're asking for is $1,008,200.
$1,008,200, and what's the total, that's the total cost of doing a project?
The total project, the grant request is $757,000. So if you look at the difference between that, a little over $230,000.
$250,000.
$230,000, we'd have to pay.
Commissioner Cummings? Okay. Um, the courthouse is the showplace for Lockawanna County. We have Arts in the Square, we have our Italian festival, all the events, movies at the square, we have bands, concerts, a lot of things go on, rallies, you name it, goes on at the courthouse in downtown Scranton. Um, every year, our maintenance crew is diligently out there re-semitting these sidewalks. And, um, if we, if it's possible for us to receive this grant, $250,000 towards that, and hopefully Stauffer Industrial Park, which has holes all over the place, is a small number for us to be able to pay. It really is. Um, I'd like to make a motion ratifying and authorizing the filing of an application for a multimodal transportation program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George. Seventeen dash zero two one zero?
Authorizing submission and modification of revisions under the Community Development Block Grant Program. We resolve, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County hereby authorizes the following submissions and modifications. Lockawanna County Dunmore Borough Community Development Block Grant revision will transfer $40,000 from Clearedance Demolition Line, $8,500 for street improvements to Large Street and Program. Lockawanna County Borough Blakely Federal Fiscal Year 2013 Community Program Modification will transfer $14,195 out of their water sewer improvement line item to the Second Street Storm Water Improvement Project. Lockawanna County Jessup Borough Federal Fiscal Year Revision will transfer $70,280 from Delaware Street to Delaware and Hand Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Lockawanna County Dunmore Borough Transfer $40,000 from Water Sewer Improvement to Project on Clearedance Demolition Line Item. Lockawanna County Jessup Borough Community Development Revision will transfer $71,000 from Delaware Street Storm Water to Delaware and Hand Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement. Lockawanna County Six, Lockawanna County Blakely Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2014 Block Grant will transfer $15,804 from the East Mountain Road Bridge Project to be used for sidewalk line item for AD8 curb cut project. And finally, seven Lockawanna County Jessup Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2015 Community Grant Action will transfer $53,844 from Delaware Street Storm Water to Delaware and Hand Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. And Mr. Kelly will explain these modifications and transfers at this time, as we do annually.
George, just one second. Just want to make sure with the Board, we're going to consolidate zero two one zero, two eleven, two twelve, and two thirteen, if the Board of Commissioners has any problem with that, and while George just give a quick explanation.
I'll briefly read seventeen oh one one. Cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of County of Lockawanna hereby awards the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Grants, the Borough to the McHale Park Handicap Ramp Installation Project General Construction, Saversky Paving Program, Expert Lane, Archibald to the lowest and most responsible bidder for $26,080. Seventeen dash zero two one two entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Old Forge. The Board of Commissioners hereby authorizing to enter into a cooperation agreement for East Kohler Avenue Improvement Project in the amount of general construction to M.E. Soden, Inc., Gassen Road and Holandsdale, the lowest, most responsible bidder for $216,870.50. And seventeen dash zero two one three entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor for a cooperation agreement for Storm Water Improvement Project One be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County hereby awards the following Community Development Block Grant Borough, Taylor for General Construction, Saversky Paving Company Number Three, Expert Lane Archibald, Pennsylvania for $219,525. And Mr. Kelly will answer questions on any and all of these agreements.
Thank you, Chief Wallace, that was a great reading. I'm glad you had that job. I'll be brief. The first-
I hope so, George.
I try. I just love to talk. The first resolution, Commissioner's going to time me, I'll be brief. The first resolution, there, uh, we're basically taking money that has been allocated as part of our Community Development Block Grant Program, we get a little over a million dollars a year. If we don't use that money, within three to five years, we lose it. We have some money that's kind of stale and sitting there, projects have been put on hold for a number of reasons. So we're just adjusting them to active projects so we don't lose this money. The projects are picked by the local municipalities, they're direct entitlement municipalities, they get the money, they decide how they want to spend it, we just manage it and administer the program. So it's housekeeping, adjusting it so we make sure we don't lose money, and we keep all the projects going. The next three that we talked about, you see a cooperation agreement with three municipalities, and the awarding of contracts. Again, Community Development Block Grant Funds, they pick the projects, we just have to make sure it's administered right and properly. We do an open bidding process, it's open by our controller. Lowest, most responsible bidder gets the contracts. The co-op agreement just basically protects the county, that if there's any overages or anything else, we don't have to pay, it's the municipality who receives the benefit and will have to pay. That sums it up.
Great. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for seventeen dash zero two one zero, seventeen dash zero two one one, seventeen dash zero two one two, seventeen dash zero two one three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seventeen dash zero two one four?
This is ratifying a quote from Sweet Advertising. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County, this hereby ratify the quote from Sweet Advertising, 120 North Abington Road, Clark Screen, for the production of a reassessment informational video would cost not to exceed $19,800. And this is actually eradicate, ratification of an agreement which was approved by both Commissioner O'Teriany and Commissioner Patrick O'Malley on August 16th of 2017. And I'll be happy to answer some questions, provide a brief explanation.
I would like to say something. I am not happy at all with this, uh, but-
You signed it.
I'm going to explain why. Under the circumstances, my concern was that there would be no explanation at all. So if the referendum passes to have it put on the ballot, I think it's important that we at least attempt to educate the people as opposed to just going forward and doing nothing. Uh, I think we should, you know, I would be much happier if it's not on the ballot now, and we could work out it longer, but we're definitely on short time. Uh, you voted to put it on the ballot in November. I'm asking you to wait until May. Uh, if we wait until May, we can look at this harder and do something differently. But in the meantime, if in fact, we go forward with that referendum question on the ballot in November, we at least have to attempt to educate the people. Uh, and, uh, under the circumstances, this is the best that I could do, best I could hope for, and, uh, considering $20,000, a heck of a lot less than what's going to happen. Uh, the other way, I'm, uh, I'm going to have to say that I unfortunately agree with this. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I mean, I wasn't there for this. I was in Erie, so I didn't have the opportunity to review it, but I would not have voted for, I would not have signed on to it anyway because I don't agree with the cost. And I think that, um, I mean, you're not going to get an independent person to discuss this. I would rather have a debate forum that was more, um, based on, you know, educate, like, people that are for and people that are against, because nobody's going to be unbiased, and this is, in my opinion, I just don't see it happening. Um, however, um, you know, I, I am interested in the comment that Commissioner O'Teriany just made in regards to, um, actually, uh, moving this up to the spring. And I would be in favor if a motion was made to do that.
Okay, I'd like to, uh-
Commissioner, did you want a further explanation on the proposal, or you're okay with it?
I just believe in educating the community, so.
It would be creation of an eight to, eight to 10-minute, uh, video presentation to present it to all of Lockawanna County. It would be available on ETV, it would be available on a county commissioner's website, it would also be available at five different locations in Lockawanna County, of which we would be having community meetings to educate the people across Lockawanna County on what reassessment is, and so that they understand the issue completely. And this, uh, proposal was made by Sweet Advertising, and they have done work for Lockawanna County in the past, and they were recommended actually by our Community Affairs Department, who had done some extensive work with them on promotional videos for Lockawanna County in the past. So that's, that's really what it would be all about.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion ratifying a quote for Sweet Advertising. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into a quick executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Down. When would I, when would I do, when would I do that, the next one, do that in November, November 13?
No, you do it now. You have to do it now, at this meeting. This should make a motion, she'll make a motion to amend to 13 million.
Okay, you're not-
And I just want to-
When you ask for a motion, you ask for a motion to amend, to amend the technical conditions.
Okay.
You want to know the purpose of the motion?
Okay, I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. Chief Wallace?
We had, we had an executive session to discuss legal issues regarding the moving of the, uh, the question from November to, uh, to the primary in May.
Thank you, Solicitor Fredericksen.
Seventeen, seventeen dash zero two one five?
Approving a reassessment referendum question be resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County just hereby approve reassessment referendum question to be placed on November 7th, 2017. Election shall Lockawanna County Commissioners incur debt not to exceed $12 million solely for the purpose of conducting a countywide revision of assessment so that all real estate within the county will be assessed at a predetermined ratio of 100% of a new base value.
Another question?
Solicitor Fredericksen did prepare it in conjunction with special counsel from Philadelphia, Attorney Joan Price. So Solicitor Fredericksen would be happy to give an explanation on it.
Well, I think it's self-explanatory. Commissioners, as we explained before, it is a question that was derived primarily from the Local Government Unit Debt Act, which allows the, uh, the county to ask the voters to approve a debt, not electoral debt is what they term it as, to fund the reassessment, if we're going to go ahead and proceed with a reassessment.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this, uh, until we can study it further and, uh, put it on the ballot in May. Do I have a second?
And we're still on the one motion, right?
On the table.
It's on the table.
Okay. On the question, for the initial referendum that we're talking about, um, the initial amount is $12 million that you're talking about. We actually spent, according to what Tom Durkin just said, 16 million, the original amount plus another-
It would have been 16 million, right?
If we spent, yeah. So I would rather increase it to the 16 million for the ballot question, but in, in compromising that amount, I'll go to 13 million if I can get that put on the ballot, along with the fact that I don't feel that this is enough information to provide to the residents of our county. Um, I want more informational sessions put out there for the people, because I will not feel comfortable having people vote on a referendum that they aren't familiar with or understand. So, um, if that could be done, I would agree to the current proposal.
Okay.
And increased educational debates.
You would agree to, sorry, Commissioner, you would agree to what?
If they increase the, uh, because we have five right now.
So, so we're going to, okay, let me get this, because you're going to, the motion will be that we're increasing it to $13 million, okay. Okay, I would have to make a motion to amend?
Commissioner, you first have a, a motion, a table on the floor, so I think you need to ask, is there a second for that?
He already did.
Yeah. And I apologize to Commissioner O'Teriany, he didn't come into the executive session with us, so, um, we didn't have the opportunity to continue the conversation. I wish, um, that he came in with me because, because Commissioner, uh, I'm asking Commissioner O'Malley to change the current wording that they had put on the ballot.
To 13.
To 13.
Okay.
I'm asking to-
And to increase, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm asking, if I can get this, I will stand with the original.
Do I have to amend what the current version is, or how would that work?
Well, he has, he has a motion on the floor, so you have to-
On.
Okay, do I have a second?
For lack of a second.
I have a lack of a second.
I want, I wanted to put the, I want to make sure I have your group before I do anything.
Then she'd have to make a motion.
That was the original.
She can make a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay, would you like to make the motion to amend?
Well-
Was there a second on Commissioner O'Teriany?
No.
No.
Yeah.
No. It didn't die. I want to make sure this is, what I asked for is-
So we're going to make, okay. We'd like to make a motion to amend the reassessment referendum question to $13 million?
Yes.
Is that, is that proper?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, with more education for the community beyond the five, um-
We originally had five informational sessions planned.
Okay.
Separate motion, I'm sorry.
So you need a motion, Commissioners, you're in a motion first to approve the referendum question with the amendment that it not exceed 13 million as opposed to 12 million.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
And they need a separate, we'll do a separate motion, Commissioner, for the informational session.
Not just this-
Yeah.
Video.
Yes.
So can I, can I have a second on 13 million additional added to this referendum that we have in front of us?
That'd be changed from 12 to 13.
Yes.
Of second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay.
Now I need another one.
I'd like to make a motion that there will be more educational meetings leading into the November general election for the citizens of Lockawanna County. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriany?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the Board.
Uh, Gary Duncan, Gary Duncan from Dunmore. Uh, just a few questions tonight. One, Commissioner's, is related to the Heritage Trail. Uh, my wife's a runner. Uh, we had the people that were involved in an accident, uh, in the Elm Street corridor along the Heritage Trail. We go up the Cape Cod every year, uh, the Cape Cod Rail Trail. Uh, at every intersection, and there are many, because that Cape Cod Rail Trail goes straight across a national seashore. So there are a lot of intersections. They have motion detectors at all of the crossings, nothing comes down, it's not gates like a railroad, but there's sensor detectors. So if you go by on bicycles, my daughter and I go about 36 miles on that rail trail biking in, in both directions. Uh, motion sensors go off. I don't know what the cost would be, but it's something I'd like to bring up tonight, if it's something we can look at. Uh, they flash, and it's a bright illumination, that rail trail's open at night and everything. It flashes for the bicycles, it flashes for the runners, it gives you-
Gary, we actually, I'm going to have George Kelly give us a few words. Um, we actually, there was, go ahead, George, so I'd like to explain what we're doing down there in the crossing.
Yes, Commissioners, approximately three meetings ago, we had a resolution that authorized the submission of a grant in support with matching funds for Heritage Valley. There were six different crossing, street crossings that were identified as very hazardous. One in question is the one where the two people were struck just two weeks ago. So we have agreed, and we have committed those funds to provide matching funds to that grant. About a $700,000 grant in total, we're a very small piece of the match. The city of Scranton actually adopted two of those crosswalks themselves as a contribution in kind. We agreed to help fund and participate in five additional crossings to be a total of seven. So progress is to be made on that. Apparently, it's not fast enough.
He wasn't sure if we were doing anything at this point. I just wanted you to come up to explain where we're going in the future.
There was supposed to be lights and there was signage on that and we can check to see if the motion is or not. That's something that we... If you'd like, we'll go down to LHVA, talk to Owen who's heading on that project.
Thank you. It wasn't that it wasn't being moved fast enough. I have...
I just wanted him to come up and explain what we're up to.
Yeah, I just didn't want any misunderstanding. And it was just a concern that we had. There are so many runners now and you're well aware of it, so that's why I wanted to bring that up. Secondly, and thank you for that clarification on the sensor system and the lights and everything. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Disability Action Committee. And I spoke... When you folks took a recess, I spoke to Chris Arnaud. I have 43 years in healthcare as a nurse, occupational therapist, rehab director. I'm on the Governor's Council on Aging. I'm one of 11 for 67 counties. That said, with a group like that, certainly for future reference, if you can keep my name in mind, I'd certainly like to be a part of it. I've spent a lifetime treating people with physical handicaps, all types of disabilities, and I'd certainly, you know, like to put my name out there for that. And please keep me in the back of your mind for future reference because I would appreciate it. I try to give back to the community. I'm certainly involved in the borough of Dunmore. And I'm gonna segue from that to this. I want to thank the Commissioners for having their last night meeting in the borough of Dunmore. It means a lot to the citizens and I'm sure to the people from the Blakely area and Peckville that are here tonight. It's a chance for us to be involved in our government. I work long hours and I work in the day and I really appreciate the fact that you give the citizens of Lackawanna County an opportunity to come out and really to have a dialogue with you folks. And I want to take two seconds and I do want to thank Commissioner Cummings. I offered everybody the opportunity to come to a Dunmore Neighborhood Watch meeting and I have to say, I was really pleasantly surprised that evening when Commissioner Cummings joined us for the meeting and I hope it was a good evening for you when you met the citizens that were at our meetings. And that said, I'm always advertising Dunmore. I'm on the Historical Society. We're a trip in Barton Street. If folks are passing through Dunmore, we're there. I don't want to steal Gerard Hetman's job, but he does it on a county basis and I have to speak up for my borough. But Dunmore Historical Society is a great asset in the community. We appreciate the county's help in the past in terms of a grant for us that we worked on. Please, folks, stop in and see us. I know Commissioner O'Terriani did come up and visit about a year or so ago and we appreciated that. And last but not least, there is a Dunmore Neighborhood Watch meeting next Monday night at 7:00 in the Dunmore Community Center on Monroe Avenue. And everybody here is welcome. We've had members of other Neighborhood Watchers come up and visit us and see how ours is set up and then they've taken them back to their communities. You're all more than welcome to join us. And thanks really again for the Heritage Trail. I really appreciate that explanation.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road, Scranton. Maybe not for long, but for now. I would like to follow up. Well, first of all, I have a question. What's the purpose of your executive session for personnel items?
Legal issues.
Which one? Which executive session?
I'm sorry.
Wait, two.
Well, you already announced that it was for legal issues regarding the referendum.
Thank you.
More questions.
I had asked at a prior meeting and I'd like to know if you have taken it for consideration, what you've decided. As I mentioned before, a nonprofit must prove that it meets the Pennsylvania Constitution's definition of a purely public charity asset forth in the law, otherwise known as the HUB test. And I ask that you consider that, how doing that for the entire county. Have you considered it and what determination have you made?
I'll answer it under Commissioners' comments.
Pardon?
Under Commissioners' comments.
Okay. Next, what is the status of the historical update of the grounds of the courthouse? If you recall, I had objected very strongly on one of the misquotes. I would like to know if that correction that I requested, if it's going forward, if the correction I made has been incorporated.
I'm so sorry I wasn't at that meeting. I could have answered it. That is in the plan already. You're referring to the anonymous quote that's from John 15 in the King James Version Bible?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was always part of the plan, so.
But that's not accurate. I mean, it is. It's from the Bible, but it... Everybody else has a name. It's Jesus Christ.
Well, we've talked to scholars and they all advised us, our committee, that it should be John 15 and we even added the King James Version, so.
King James Version?
Yeah.
Well, I respect, I guess... No, I don't respect what you're doing because giving the quote is... Yeah. It deals with giving your life for another person. My Christ gave His life for a lot of people and I am offended that this body apparently doesn't care enough about the Christian faith to go that far. But okay, thank you. I understand your...
No, no, no. I have to respond to that, Marie, because I'm just hearing this from Marie too. So is there a time that committee... Was that in our meeting?
Yeah, we actually had about it.
I know you said where it came from, but I didn't know you weren't going to...
Yeah, I gave you a copy of all the corrections and we had like a...
Okay, I'll go through it, but I don't agree with that either, so I'll talk to you about that.
But nothing's actually been approved to be done.
Right, that's not approved, so don't...
This is just... This is the corrections that they're looking to take care of the issues that are there, but nothing's been worked.
I mean, this has been going on for a long time.
Well, I'll take care of it right now. I think it should be...
When is it gonna be resolved?
If it's a word, it should be Jesus Christ, period. There you go.
Just so the public understands, there was a process and it wasn't just us deciding that and that's with the authority of the people who worked on this from the Historical Society and other key men by. So we can certainly look into it. I'd be happy to go back and we want to do things correctly and I will go back and review that.
Don't take it personally, as I say... Yes, it was my... Well, I send it into the committee and then when you didn't accept it in the beginning, I took it. But anyway, okay, don't take it personally.
So your second question, obviously this is a long process. A lot of these mistakes were done before, I mean, they were before I even started, back in 2008. So it takes a long time. We want to get it right this time. So it's not something that we take lightly. So I started this process last year with the purchasing department, so we've been working on it. We've been double checking for the checking, so that's why. It's nothing. And now we're gonna be going out to put out an RFP to see what can be done, but we do try.
Okay, well, I'm an old woman. I'd like it resolved before I'm pushing up the dirt, so thank you.
I think I'm probably going to 10 years. So just government will slowly be able to get things done, so.
And then finally, on the one-third, 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 I heard that from the contractor that was doing the prior reassessment and I also heard from the people down in Luzerne County, which made a lot more sense, especially if you are the company that's performing the audit. Because what happened, the reassessment, because what happens is one-third of the people are ecstatic because their assessments go down. Another third are happy because it doesn't change at all and it could have gone up maybe. They were sweating it a little bit. And so the third who get killed at the other end have nobody to stand with them. And so it's one-third against two-thirds and that's how it comes into being, but thank you.
Hello again, Wayne Evans. I want to go back to 215 because I'm a little confused about what just happened here because it was very confusing with all the motions and everything else. So Commissioner O'Terriani made a motion to table 215 because you wanted additional study and more time for education and it wasn't a second. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani made a motion to table and there was no second to that.
But that's...
That was the motion.
No, I think you mentioned you wanted additional study.
Table that more.
Right.
That's all I can make a motion to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Cummings?
Counselman Wayne Evans, thank you so much for coming into our meeting. First of all, I appreciate you coming in. And surprisingly enough, I pretty much agree with most of what you said. I'm hoping that this gives the community more time, more educational backgrounds and I'll work on that. I will. I promise you I will. And I know you said in your meeting that you're going to work on it through the Scranton City Council as well, so I look forward to that. I mean, even though I am against reassessment completely, you know, I think it's best... I think this was a good solution to put it on the ballot. However, I would have... I think it's the best. There's no other way to do it because I'm against it and Commissioner O'Terriani is for it. There's just no vote. There's no vote. There would be no second. So, you know, I do think that... I do appreciate Commissioner O'Terriani attempting to help me as well. I wish that you were in the executive session with us, but I went to CCAP and I looked at some of the stuff that you were talking about because, you know, I'm not in real estate. I'm a nurse, so, you know, I try and watch some of your meetings as well and some of the commentary that you had. And I know you're gonna meet with me soon so we can review that even more. So thank you for that as well. And I hope that, you know, we can have a good relationship from now on and I appreciate you coming. Thank you. Marie Schumacher came in. In regards to the video, I still don't think that that's a good way... I don't think that's a good thing to spend our money on. I just don't. I don't think it's gonna be that... I just don't. I think it's gonna be a biased video. I think that the only way to get an unbiased opinion is to have debate on the issue with both sides talking about it and somewhere in the middle, you'll find the truth. But this is a numbers issue as well. And, you know, of all the assessments that I've seen, the costs are still going on. Luzerne County still is voting for $750,000 towards their appeals, which I didn't think is supposed to be happening even five years after their assessment was done. That's three and a half... Well, 3.7 million in five years. So it's just... It's an extremely costly venue and I think there's a better way. I really think there's a better way to do this and I think that many people agree that, you know, there's House Bill 76 and that may not be the actual answer to the solution or the solution to the problem, but I think they could look at some elements of it and pass some of that at the state level. And I would hope they do. At CCAP, we walked... Went through some resolutions that were provided for us and one of the resolutions that they're talking about is to the change in the policies regarding reassessment in order to help counties in deciding when reassessment should be performed. And I think that that needs to be done because you see how contentious this is. You have people, you know, threatening lawsuits. You have, you know, who's fighting over what part of the reassessment? Is it wrong? Is it right? We know this. Nobody seems to know the answers on one-third rulings. It's nothing but a gas. So the changes they're trying to attempt to help alleviate costs of reassessment calls for some loans and possibly grants to assist counties in order to defray their costs. It would require certain criteria be met rather than being mandatory and along with the proposed criteria that would limit the broad authority the courts have had in this matter because then you're letting a judge decide. I mean, it's just a crazy tax and I just... I don't like the tax to begin with. I think it should be a sales tax and maybe some other tax that would actually work. It was noted at CCAP that it's a statewide issue. It's not just our county. There's a lot of issues with it. People are being mandated to do it through court orders and I don't want to see that happen here. So I hope we can, you know... I hope that it doesn't pass. I really don't want it to pass. I don't think it'll pass. I think if we educate people on what it's about, then no one can condemn us for not educating them and say that that's why they vote. They didn't know enough because I don't want that to happen. I don't want people to be able to say, "We don't feel that the public knew enough about this issue to vote on it adequately or appropriately." I want to make sure that they know as much as they can know about reassessment so that they have an educated decision when they go into the voting booth and I hope that we can provide that for them. On the second thing that I wanted to talk about, which nobody here, well, maybe are, the opioid epidemic is an issue that comes up at all the meetings I have attended everywhere. The last time I presented a video of my interpretation of who is at the core of this epidemic and suggested that pharmaceutical companies should help in paying for the manufactured crisis that I believe they helped to create. So I was very pleased to see a resolution that will seek quarter legislative determination that the practices of pharmaceutical companies to encourage opioid prescriptions at some level responsible for the epidemic and the costs to the public and clients. I hope that resolution passes and we will be voting on that with the upcoming weeks and, you know, maybe that'll help alleviate some of the costs to our offices with Bill and Jason, so. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of those. There was many, many resolutions. There was 19 resolutions that we had talked about in CCAP and it was an extremely informative meeting. It was five long days. There was a lot to go over and I'll be talking more about everything that we went over in the next couple of meetings. In regards to the Disability Action Committee, what a great committee. I mean, they do... I mean, they're doing great work and as Commissioner O'Terriani said, it doesn't just help bring businesses in here, but it keeps our people here. You know, nobody's moving because we can't even accommodate what their needs are because we're actually providing those services. So I appreciate the board's work on that. To everyone here, I appreciate you coming out. I thank you for the time and for your patience and I thank Blakely Borough for helping us to have our meeting here, so thank you very much. That's all I have.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
In regard to Commissioners Cummings opioid epidemic, I understand recently I was informed that there are class action lawsuits filed to force drug companies to do that and there's a large pool of money and we should certainly get involved in that. Regarding the question on the reassessment, you know, I believe the wording is misleading to ask the question to borrow 12 or 13 million dollars lends itself to a no vote. The fact that we may... It may be between 5 and 13 million dollars. We should do an RFP, an RFQ. We should look at our surpluses for some of the money that could be spent on this. The last part of the question with regard to the predetermined ratio of 100%, no one knows what that is. How many people in this room? I've asked that before. I bet the majority of people don't. So that lends itself to no. People do not understand. It'll be frightened and won't know. People do not understand, they'll be frightened and won't know. So the question is flawed. It's also not to be, a good idea to be on the ballot at the same time as that state referendum is on, which is a positive change to 100% because it gives the state the right to give people for their primary residents more money back. Okay? It's not for businesses or your other properties, but where you live. It gives them the idea, the benefit of being able to do that because it's at 50% now. And, you know, and my idea to rework the question, expand the education process and put the vote off until, on reassessment until May primary, I think was absolutely the answer and I, you know, I'm sorry it didn't work out that way and we have to do the best we can under the circumstances and go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Solicitor Brazil?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there was an issue, a question raised by Ms. Nish, I believe, concerning why do individuals who don't own property have the right to vote on a question relative to reassessment? And I would kind of answer that in maybe three fashions. Number one, the only requirement to vote on anything, being, electing a public official or even a resolution, is 18 years of age and being registered and that's kind of the law and everybody has the right to do that. But I would say this is not uncommon. In 2012, the legislature, the General Assembly felt that when taxes go up or taxes are raised by school districts, if they're raised to a certain level because of the impact on the citizens, the citizens should have a right to vote on that. So now if school districts desire to raise taxes over a certain level, it's not just elected officials voting, they have to put it out on referendum for the people to decide whether or not they want their taxes raised. And as you well know with school districts, many people pay taxes in school districts that don't have kids or children that go to school and many people vote on those tax increases if they're referendums that don't have children that go to school. But finally, I would say in terms of an assessment, however it happens, whether you believe in it or you don't believe in it, it's pretty clear that a significant number of people's property taxes are gonna go down, a significant number are gonna stay the same and a significant number of people's property taxes are going to rise. That's just a reality of a reassessment. And whether you own property or live in property, the taxes going up or down may impact your rent, so it is my belief that everybody has an interest in this reassessment. And if you don't own property now, you may own it down the road. So I think it's something that impacts all residents and even all, you just have to be 18 years old and registered, I think it does have an impact on all residents in the community. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to thank Blakely Borough, the mayor, council, business manager for having us. Thank you. Council chambers is beautiful. Nothing like being in Blakely. If we did an RFQ, and we talked about this before. Chief Wallace, Solicitor Fredrickson, what would happen if we put an RFQ out there and they bid it, the two different reassessments?
Are you asking me, Commissioner, if we put an RFQ?
If we put out RFQ.
Correct.
And it was bid it.
Right.
What would happen to those two individuals after it got voted through if we RFQ'd it beforehand?
They would get disqualified because they've already subject, yeah, they're already subject to court check.
How many, are there that actually do this in the Commonwealth?
There's two companies. Two licensed companies.
Okay. My biggest concern is that we lost $8 million. It just was gone, $8 million down the drain. And I look at the referendum as an opportunity for the people to make their decision whether they're for it or against it. Like you said, the one-third rule, some will go up, some will go down and some will stay the same. I think each family has to determine what's gonna work best on behalf of their family and their household. And I would just like to say, you know, we have lots of time for people to get registered. Anybody like to get registered? Marion, what's the last date for registration?
October the 10th.
October the 10th. So there's lots of time for anybody to like to register beforehand to let their, let their voice be heard. This is a people's choice. You know, we, I mean, we did the Globe Store, you know, I mean, we didn't put it to a referendum. The Globe Store was all simple. The Globe Store lived within the leases and it pays for itself. There's gonna be a $250,000, $300,000 savings after the fact. And we needed a building and we had all these leases in downtown Scranton and on the outskirts. And we wanted to make it one shop stopping for all of our citizens and make sure that busing was there and we were gonna revitalize the 100 block of Wyoming Avenue and help with downtown Scranton by infusing approximately 700 employees to the Globe Store. No tax increase to build the building. It's in the leases and one day all the citizens, their taxpayers, will own that building. So I just want that to be known. That's something that we absolutely believed in and it didn't cost anything at this point. It's in the leases. I just believe the people are the ones that are to make the final decision on this. We make decisions every day on all different issues, but this is one that affects everyone in all different capacities. And I just also believe that if it's ratified and it's voted through, that in 2020, no one here is, knows if we're gonna be here in 2020. She may not be here, I may not be here, Mr. Notariani may not be here. But if this goes through, it's gonna make it really tough for next Board of Commissioners to stop it. Can I get a legal opinion if, what would happen if the referendum goes through for the reassessment? What would we have at that point?
Well, I don't want that to happen. Is that what you want?
No, 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 but I wanted just to answer.
If, if it passes, Commissioner, the county would then do an RFP, RFQ process to get in the bids and whatever the lowest responsible bid would be, they would then borrow on electoral debt as opposed to non-electoral debt for that and they would proceed with the reassessment. And the money, the 12, the money that would be borrowed for the assessment can only be used for reassessment purposes, period.
So the people, so basically, the next, if there's another Board of Commissioners, they would have to adhere to this.
Correct. They wouldn't be able to allocate that money anywhere else except for the reassessment.
It would have to be utilized for.
They'd have to follow through with it. Correct.
That's what my biggest concern was because last time it got stopped basically somewhere towards the end of it. And that just can't happen again if it was to go through. I'd like to just thank everyone for coming out this evening. Please come out, go out and vote. The general election is just around the corner. It's your right. Our servicemen and women have died for this right. They're fighting overseas right on our behalf right now. We have a lot of things going on around the country and around the world. Please come out and vote. That's why we have a country called America, we get to make a decision. So it's gonna be the people's decision on what happens, if it's to go forward or it won't. I'd just like to have a quick comment. We had a airshow this past weekend. It came back after a 17-year hiatus. It was great. We're gonna be talking about the numbers in the next couple of weeks and I'm sure that we're going to be seeing it in the future, but that's something the Airport Board will make a decision on the next few weeks. Also, on September 19th, we are gonna have the National Championship up at PNC Field and hopefully the defending AAA champions and Governors' Cup champions, Real Riders will be there for it. So please, if you can come out, let's fill the stadium, let's cheer on our, our home team if they make it to the final game, which I'm hoping they can. At this point, they're doing very well in their own division. And last but not least, on August 24th, we're gonna have our drive-in movie Downtown Scranton and the movie's gonna be La La Land and that will be around 8 o'clock dusk. So anybody like to come out and enjoy downtown, it would be great. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You said you were gonna address my, my property question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I still have to talk to Mr. Foley about that. Mr. Foley, that's, is that, could we look into that, the hub? Because I, at that time.
We've already pulled down, I sent over the office, I believe the exempt properties are there.
Would you like to go up to the podium for just a second?
We've already pulled down the, the list of the exempt properties. I believe that they were sent over to the Chief of Staff on them. I believe there's a little over 4,700 exempt properties in the city, or in the county, I'm sorry.
Scared the heck out of me, that one.
They have to be reviewed basically individually and the challenge will have to be made legally. And I'd like to meet with Attorney Fredrickson and Attorney Brazil on it and how to attack those. A lot of them, the major ones are the Diocese, the University of Scranton, Marywood, they are large, you know, factors in that and that's something that will have to be addressed on a Commissioners' level and a legal level.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. I'd like to just also thank Councilman, Scranton Councilman Wayne Evans for coming out. Thank you. Wayne, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, I'd just like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notariani?